Berford is probably in the building, I think. Okay, I want to thank everybody for agreeing to amend today's agenda. The manager and his staff still have a lot of work to do in the aftermath of the storm. Thought we'd have a shortened meeting today, not only that, but I know the school superintendent and his staff is dealing with their issues as far as their buildings, if we know of any yet. I'm not sure if they're any major. It'd be interesting to see from Mr. Bentley if they had any water damage, since he proclaimed all the buildings from the hurricane at one point, to see what happens, but we'll see. But Marcus, you have an overview and then you want to move to the report on how we did in the hurricane?
Sure. Mayor and council members, basically, we have a very short agenda for you today. As the mayor mentioned, we previously had the school board, a joint meeting between the school board and the council, but by delaying this meeting, it's allowed us to continue to assess some of that buildings, as well as schools do the same. I will say that there are really two speakers today we have for you. James Rogers, who's director over at the Emergency Operations Center, and also John Kiefer, who's director of Public Works. And two things we want to accomplish is really give you an overview of the EOC operations that we have in place, excuse me, as well as the next steps, the post-recovery in there. A number of questions I'm sure that you're getting from your constituents, so I have staff here that are able to address those questions. I will say, you know, two quick things before I turn it over to James. Last week, we talked about impact, this whole concept of having collaboration with one purpose and one message. I will tell you that that's something that we are striving to do, but Irene basically forced us into it, and forced us to sit around a table and be able to talk and respond, not just to the council, but to the residents. So when you start to be with somebody for 72 continuous hours, you learn a lot about their operations, and it makes you collaborate and sometimes be a little bit more innovative than we would have been by ourselves. So with that said, I will turn it over to James to give you a quick overview of some of the challenges that we have.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding Hurricane Irene. Although I am giving this presentation, I'm just truly the face of all the men and women who really make this thing happen throughout the city. We have so many fine people who rise to the occasion time after time during any event that we have in the city, and really, I'm just, again, the face of that presentation right now. What I wanted to do is just give you a quick overview of what we, in terms of pre-hurricane actions. Really, what we do, anytime you have a hurricane or an event, we had a presentation, or not a presentation, but a declaration by Governor McDonnell. And then, once we had that declaration from Governor McDonnell, what that does is that mobilizes the state agencies so that they can begin to preposition themselves to help any localities. The city manager in consultation with the mayor declared a state emergency on Thursday at 3:30 PM. Again, he saw an imminent threat to the locality here and made sure we were doing everything that we could to get prepared for there. The president's declaration, in terms of not a disaster, but a declaration of an emergency, also takes, gives FEMA an opportunity to begin to go to the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, as well as begin to preposition assets. Just wanted to give you, whenever we get ready to prepare and do these things, we automatically get down to the EOC. Matter of fact, Marcus called me on Monday, talking about the hurricane. I'm saying it's, you know, a few more days out, but he really wanted to get ahead of it and get us prepared for this. So again, what we began to do is give Marcus briefings on Mondays and Tuesdays on the storm track and the intensity. Marcus gathered his senior staff at the EOC, all of us at the EOC, on Thursday, and said, "This is what we have, and this is how we got to start to prepare." All of the departments began to review their plans and made sure that they were ready to go, had staffing ready. And then, one thing that Marcus, the city manager, talked about was coordination. Really had lots of partners that we were coordinating with, public schools, public health, Red Cross, Sheriff's Office, Dominion Power, and Virginia Natural Gas. Part of that preparation is really activating the EOC, getting everyone there, getting everyone acclimated to getting there, getting it all set up in terms of IT, but it was ready to go on Thursday. We were in the EOC until Friday, until Sunday at 5:00 PM, when we deactivated, but really, that was just to give people an opportunity to go home and get some rest, because they've been there since a Thursday morning. Activated while joint information center, anytime we activate, we want to make sure we have Bob Batchor and his group there, so that they can give the public the information. All of the press releases are coordinated, the city manager has to look at those presentations or look at those briefings to make sure they're correct, and then we send them out. And this first time, I think we've used Facebook, Twitter, all of the social media that we could to make sure we got the information out. And then, as Frank always told me, he was in these meetings starting on Thursday, and we kept everybody leaning forward, telling me what you're going to be doing on, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and he said, "Look, not me yet, I'm getting my people ready." So anyway, he leaned forward, got all of his damage assessment people ready, so after the storm, they could go out immediately and do the damage assessment. Again, just to give you just some timeline, the storm began to affect the Commonwealth around 2:00 AM on Saturday, on the 27th, and it exited around 6:00 AM on the 28th. Based on the storm service values and by the National Weather Service, we experienced surges in the range of five to seven feet. Just to give you some quick statistics, we had several shelters open, 612 people shared, served in those shelters. At the height of the storm, we had about 50,000 residents with outages, and now we're below 6,000 residents. But each one of those residents are important, and so Dominion Power is working very quickly to get those services restored. Once Frank and his folks went out, they did it very quickly. We had, this was, we were very, very fortunate in terms of the damage that we had. And what he does is, we have to do an initial damage assessment in 72 hours after an event. The total value was a little bit north of $9 million. It affected 356 properties, two were destroyed.
James, were they houses?
Two houses. Were there two houses, Frank?
The two structures that were destroyed were two houses where you had a tree fall into and then take opposite direction.
Were they in the same neighborhood?
No, certainly, in two different Marshall City.
These are all private property?
This is from private property assessment, which is what we're responsible for. We're looking at all residential and non-residential properties, and how public we have.
And as we get into, I'll have a section here on FEMA, that's when we begin to get into the facilities that we own. But just wanted to give you some sense of what we've sent to, and this is preliminary, but you have to try to get that to them in 72 hours. And just to give you some, with the northeast, it was about $20 million in damage, and this is close to $9 million. So just wanted to give you that reference. Again, that just kind of gives you a map of where they are.
Can you get back to that map real quick?
Yes, sir.
There's a cluster of green dots on the bottom right of it. It's just interesting, because it stands out compared to the rest of the map. Is that flood damage from the end of the creek?
No, sir. This was mainly wind damage in the River Oaks area.
Okay. Okay. It's just interesting, because you can see all the dots over in the areas that normally flood, but that one area in particular just caught my eye.
It jumped out at all of us, we were not expecting that.
Is it possible? Right there in the bottom right, it's on the cluster of green dots, and it's over, it looks like Poplar Hall area.
It is, it is. Near that area, River Oaks.
River Oaks. There wasn't a tornado, was it? I mean, is there any damage there?
We didn't have reports of that.
No, not in this area.
That green is the least intense form of damage, and that means the structure is affected.
Okay.
So you've got missing shingles, you've got siding that's been damaged by wind. That is the least intense type of damage that FEMA recognizes that we've collected from actual.
Okay.
And again, we always try to lean forward or continue to look forward to what we have to do. We're going to be going into the recovery stage, we're in the recovery stage, but one of the things that my office and the rest of us have to do is really get prepared for FEMA to come to town. So what we're doing is, we're making sure we're gathering those costs. We had a meeting of a group of us yesterday, really putting that whole thing together, so that we are capturing those costs by each department. So really, you just want to make sure you have discussions of protective measures. They're going to want to go around, take a look, and verify some of the things that we've told them. So that's what we're going to be doing in the days ahead on the emergency operations side, although John and his folks and people in the recreation parks and open spaces will be doing the tree, down tree recovery, those kind of things. I still have to stay focused on making sure we get everything done on the FEMA side, but just wanted to just share those with you, and this is just a quick overview. And we're really just at the very start of this in terms of FEMA, and they're going to do a preliminary damage assessment. We've done our initial one, they'll come in, do some verification, and then they'll take us right on through the process. So it's a three-step process, but we're going to get through that one. But just want to let everyone know, we've got that on our mind to make sure that we can get reimbursed for anything we need to. The caveat to that is, though, that not only the governor, but the president has to declare a presidential disaster, not just a declaration, but a disaster, and then you will become eligible. And there's multiples that you use, it's the population, this 2010 census, time and economic number that it gives, ours just happens to be $3.27, and you just do the multiples times our, that gives us roughly, you know, the $800,000 threshold that we need to be here in, in the city of Norfolk, that we can push that up to the state, and then they will take that big number and give it to the president and say, "Hey, declare a disaster," and then...
Our monetary damages are approximately $800,000 per person?
This is for the, this is cost, and not the damages, but cost.
For FEMA to reimburse it more than that, or?
Yeah. It's going to be Norfolk. So there are two things, so you're right, Mayor, you're doing the math based on the dollar figure and the population.
Right.
Two key things that I'll keep saying preliminary, preliminary, those two things, three things, preliminary, preliminary, preliminary. So these are just the estimates we have at this time, and they can be greater, but for what's occurred over the last couple of days, this is what we have in terms of that $9.1 million, it's a preliminary number.
When you talk about the reimbursement, we're talking reimbursement for the city in terms of our costs, overtime, those types of things.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we're continuing, and we tried to lean forward on this in terms of understanding, not just looking at the day that we were in. The city manager really had us looking one day, two days out, and he really, when we're setting those briefings, he, you know, he was saying, "Okay, I'm okay with this block of time, now what are we going to do this block of time?" And he would not check off until we were leaning forward and ensuring that we had those things checked. So this is part of that leaning forward, saying, "Okay, how are we going to get all those things together?" So we have the formula, we have the spreadsheet that everyone knows how to put into the system, and Roy's statements here from risk management will manage that for us and really get that information for, and Roy has worked with the state and the feds on this kind of stuff for years, and so he's very, very well regarded, and knows what he's doing when we put this to go to get reimbursements. And that is really the extent of my presentation, and I'm going to hand it off to John Kiefer for recovery.
Can I just?
Yes.
My main concern right now, I sent an email last night, it was kind of late, are people who don't have power still, particularly the elderly that are on medication, or, and that maybe they live in an area where their neighbors are not checking up on them, are we sending anybody to those areas to knock on doors, just to make sure people are okay? Because the longer that we go without power, and we have some, you know, residents that are stubborn, and they're going to say they don't want help, but I'm just, you know, as we go through the week, there's going to be those couple houses in a neighborhood that just don't have power yet, because it's only a couple of houses. Pine Well, I've gotten reports of some elderly people that still don't have power, Bel Air area, Bayview section, and I just, you know, are we going to send somebody to go knock on doors if the neighbors aren't assisting?
We can, Councilman Swingle, we can make sure that we ramp it up a little bit, or a great deal. For example, we have some of the community resource officers, we have lists and phone numbers of all the senior and disabled individuals that are in their particular area. So that's something that I can continue to communicate with Chief Chamberlain, and we also have our code enforcement individuals out there, but you bring up an excellent point, and we can make sure that we're taking that type of coverage with just that community resource officer, in that neighborhood, more so than anyone else that's literally knocking on doors.
Because I think they said Isabel, half of the deaths happened after the hurricane. You know, some of the emails I was receiving yesterday from people concerned about neighbors and diabetics that have insulin that needs to be refrigerated, that they might not know that they can't keep it on ice for, you know, so long.
Sure. And John and I, John Kiefer are beginning that conversation this morning to make sure we reach those folks. But I don't want, the message shouldn't go out that we've got our police officers out there blocking on.
Right.
I mean, we need the name of somebody if we think that there's an issue.
James, I have a question.
Isn't that right, Marcus?
Yeah, exactly right.
If you've got the name of somebody who you think, you know, needs to be looked at, we're at a point in time where I think the manager could probably, you know, in terms of...
We are encouraging neighbors to get to us, up to the city, if there are people too.
I think we're only, you sit down to 6,000 people that don't have power, so that's not, I mean, that's pretty manageable, and they're probably in pockets, they're not, you know...
Well, that's the other thing, I had a conversation with Chuck Penn, Dr. May and Virginia Power, yesterday and this morning, and what he was saying is that they're trying to get the most, you know, the larger number of people without power on first, and you will have, just because of the way the grid surges, electricity, you may have people who are in pocketed areas, but they're also encouraging people to call in, even if you think your neighbor did down the street, to have everybody that is still without power to call in, so that they can make sure that they get everybody back on. Because it could just be something in the power grid, the way that the electricity goes to one house and doesn't go to another, and, you know, they just need to know. So if people don't have power, even if they, their next door neighbor called or whatever, that they still need to call Virginia Power. But James, I, you know, I just wanted to say, I know the mayor said we weren't going to do council concerns, but you guys did a great job. I mean, I got so many comments from citizens via Facebook and email about the information and getting it out early, so that people would know what was happening and what their options were. You guys did a fantastic job in giving out information to the citizens and getting it out to us, so that we could get it out to people. I have one person say, "I've never had anybody come around, like the police went around, to let folks know that there were mandatory evacuation." A lady said she never remembered that ever happening. So you guys did a really good job in making sure that the information got out there. The team did a great job.
And we just wanted to make sure, too, one of the things, when you have these kinds of events, Chief Wise actually has someone in Dominion Operations Center helping us field those calls. I made a couple of calls, if you guys know, I made a couple of calls yesterday, to the operations center, to the firefighters there, to help get assistance, or give me some time frames, so that I could tell the resident exactly, and where we did it for Eagle Side, Eagle Side had some issues, we had trucks here from Kentucky, they were just waiting to really get them to certify that the work was going. And so, but having someone in their operations centers, as the city manager says, we, you know, we're really very collaborative, and I could call his office, his firefighter, and mention that along a little bit, but we still need to continue doing things going forward.
The other thing that we need to look at, too, is pets. I know that none of our shelters took pets, but maybe we can do something collaboratively with maybe the Hamptor Rose Bay Neuter people, or the PETA people, or some other organization that handles that, that we might be able to collaborate something, because these kinds of things happen to us. So, down the road, that might be something that we can look at.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair.
With the drive-through round for damage, were you able to also assess all the people that lost their duck?
Lost what?
Duck work. They're all the, under the house. You know, because everybody in my neighborhood, they've lost their duck work again, and I can't imagine that you would know that by driving around.
We have no way of knowing that, under the preliminary damage assessment requirements that FEMA and VDM have us do, we're simply looking at the exterior buildings for discernible damage, using the guidelines that FEMA has provided to us for what we are looking for. So we have no idea what's happened inside the house.
This isn't inside the house, this is under the house.
We can't see it unless you can see it.
So is that reportable? I mean, do we need people to report that they've lost all that? And this is about $10,000 a shot, I think, and so when you start adding that up...
Well, I don't think FEMA's going to cover that.
So that isn't important? So FEMA would cover shingles, but they wouldn't cover loss from flood?
I don't think FEMA's going to cover shingles.
There's no guarantee FEMA will cover any of this. If the homeowner is insured, then you're not going to, FEMA's not going to come in and recover any portion of that.
All right, but what you're telling me is that dependent on what the damage is in the area, is dependent on the coverage FEMA's going to give, so don't we want to have all the damage recorded? You know, if you're counting shingles, why aren't we counting duck work?
There's a time, there's like a 72-hour timeframe here.
This is just initial.
This is a preliminary report.
Okay, but so going forward, are we going to look into for that?
Going forward, if we get information from the residents, we will capture that, but as I said, we try to give them a snapshot fairly quickly.
Right. The preliminaries.
But go ahead, James. FEMA is not an insurer of an individual's house.
Right, I understand.
It's two separate issues. FEMA's for public damage.
I guess my confusion is, you went around to look at places and counted the damage that were shingles and things like that, knowing that FEMA wasn't going to cover that. So if you cared about the shingles, why aren't you caring about duck?
Well, let me be very clear, is what we're looking at, is that FEMA has broken all structures into four different categories. Was the structure affected by the storm? Did it experience minor damage? Did it experience major damage? Or was it destroyed? And FEMA has given us categories of the extent of value that we could assign to each one of those types of damage to a house, or to a structure. So we're not saying, we're only looking at shingles here, we're saying, "We see shingles are missing, that's going to be an indication this house was affected, and it's going to be 1% of the value of the house." And that's all we're doing, because this is a very preliminary assessment. Okay, it's to try to give FEMA and VDM an indication of the intensity of the storm. This is not an absolute number, it is an estimate of the intensity of the storm and its effect, so they can begin to assess its overall impact and what they may have to do in the future. But we are not going in and estimating, "This house lost six shingles, so that's going to be a few hundred dollars." It's just purely these rough percentages, based on those four categories.
I think what Dr. Whibley is asking is how would these dollars be dispersed? You're going around and you're getting an assessment, and it's...
But it's not insurance.
I understand, I understand, that would be flood insurance.
Or homeowner's insurance.
Right, that would be flood insurance, the individual homeowner, but I think what you're saying is that if you're going around and you're getting this amount, you're coming up with this number, and then FEMA, FEMA would reimburse the...
It will be based on individual claims, because then, when the homeowner comes in to do the work, they'd have to make an individual claim.
Right.
Our number is purely, it is, it's why the city manager referred it, preliminary. No one can get any money off of this number. This is simply to try to give a VDM, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and Federal Emergency Management Agency an indication of how severely impacted the area might be, so that they can begin looking at what their response may need to be. But it's purely for that purpose.
Right, but FEMA would help individuals.
They will, if it is determined to be a disaster area, and then the individual would have to make the claim.
Exactly.
I just felt like our impact would be enhanced if you understood that a neighborhood that you looked through that was otherwise looked pristine, you realized that the majority of those homes lost all of their duck work. So if you're saying you want FEMA to know what the impact of this storm was, then you ought to be looking more at something that costs $10,000 worth versus some shingles.
The challenge we have there is that duck work is not one of the things that FEMA says we should be looking for.
If siding was missing?
Siding is missing. What you're looking at is, as you're going through, do we see trees have fallen on the house and have damaged the roof? Have shingles blown off, which is an indication that they've experienced water damage in the house? Are you seeing water lines on the house, which is an indication of interior flooding? These are the things we're looking at. We're not trying to say, "This house experienced this much damage." It's, this is the nature of the damage, and based on that, it's going to fall into one of these classifications. A house we say is destroyed, that means a tree fell through the house, it has pierced the exterior walls. Is that house repairable? Possibly. But for the FEMA numbers, what we're saying is, that house was essentially demolished by the storm, so it's been destroyed. Purely a very rough estimate, this is very preliminary. We're not trying to go in and say, "This is everything that happened." It's just based on the criteria that we've been given by the federal and state governments to look at, this is what we're seeing.
Of the two houses, did one of those include the house on Eagle Side Room with the tree in it?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, yeah, there were two, the two houses, both of them, and I know one was in that general area, so I think that maybe...
One was by North Side.
Yeah, one of them is up at the North Side, and one is in the Eagle Side area.
Okay.
So my guess is, those are probably the two houses where we actually saw a tree had fallen on the house, and had done significant damage, piercing the exterior walls. So that house, under the federal guidelines, was determined to be destroyed.
The logic is not...
It's not good, yes. Logic is not good. I can tell right now, you need to stop worrying about the city and start worrying about FEMA.
There's a, before I turn it over to John, there's a couple of things, as we start to get to the post-event, that I just wanted to make sure that I shared with the council. The first responders and individuals at the shelters, they included, you know, a budget analyst, so it's really folks throughout the city, and you've been saying, "I'll make sure that I thank everyone." I just want you to know the depth of the number of individuals and the types of folks that are actually out in the shelters. The other thing that was rewarding to me was that, Sunday morning at 7:00 AM, as we started to look at recovery, I went over to see some of the folks at Public Works and Utilities, and I will tell you that to a person, they were geared up, ready to go, energetic, and basically saying, "This is our time to shine, we're going to show you what we're made of," and they've just been incredible. So I just wanted to say that before I turn it over to John.
Okay. I want to talk about the recovery operations. Immediately after a hurricane or natural disaster, city forces are charged with initiating the recovery operations for the city infrastructure. Now, this is something that many departments in the city are training on continuously, year after year. Every time there's an event or a near miss, we go through lessons learned and do things to make sure that we're better prepared next time. You know, utilities, Public Works, recreation parks, open space, planning, facilities, police, fire, EOC have all been working on our preparations and training continuously, and hopefully it shows each time we go through it. The components of the recovery are response to citizen emergencies, we talked a little bit about that, you have some situations where people are without power, or have had damages to their homes and so forth, and police and fire are involved in those. Clearing roads is primarily what I'll talk about in a minute with Public Works. Frank has talked about the damage assessment that's done by a number of departments citywide. We have a major effort coming on debris cleanup, restoration of water sewers, traffic signal services as a result of the power outage are also part of it. We still have some traffic signals out in the city, in each case, that's because the power's not been restored by Virginia Power, but as it comes back on, we have our crews working dawn to dusk, even through the night, to restore the traffic signals, and we're down to, I think, less than 10 of them still need to be restored as of this morning. Draining of flooded areas, we did some pumping out of areas out in Willoughby, Mason Creek, and we also helped in some cases where some areas and yards and so forth are flooded, that we helped pump some of those down, so homeowners can start recovering in their own homes. We liaison with other agencies, HRTV dot, for example. Repairs to damaged facilities is something that's going to be coming up. Repairs to damaged facilities is something that's gonna be coming up, and of course, we track it all for potential reimbursement. As Marcus mentioned, the city crews began clearing the roads at 7:00 a.m. Sunday. The storm went through during the night, and at first light, our leadership team met at 6:00 a.m., and the people were out on the road at 7:00 a.m., over 400 people. People from Public Works, our streets, Waste Management, Stormwater, Transportation Division, Recreation Parks and Open Space was out there with their folks, along with a number of crews from the sheriff, support from police, fire, public health, utilities, had folks out to make sure that all of their facilities were in good operating order as well. The first thing we focus on is street access. That's vital for everybody else to get around, police, fire, city services, so citizens can get out and have access to hospitals, services, their business, and so forth. And so, that was the first thing that we did on the first day, was to clear the roads. We've seen about 100 city trees down. There's 450 cases of damaged trees, reporting and debris blocking the streets to start with. This compares to about 2,000 trees that we had down in Isabel. Those, a lot of the things were comparable to Isabel, we did not sustain anywhere near the damages that we did there. We did have all city arterial and collector streets open. By the end of the day, everybody can't get to their house. There are still a few cases, about a dozen, where we still have to clear some trees off the roads and a few, about seven cases where we still have trees on houses, and we'll have all that done by the end of the week. Flooding, our stormwater crews worked through the storm in continuing efforts to clear any blocked drainage, pump the flooded areas. I mentioned keeping the underpasses open. We had two underpasses that flooded, Virginia Beach Boulevard and Monticello Avenue. We had an electrical problem at Monticello that we'll fix. This is much better than under Isabel, where we had most of our underpasses flooded. We also closed the tide gate downtown, as well as on Mason Creek, and did some pumping of low-lying areas that we mentioned. John?
Yes, sir.
The two underpasses?
Yes.
You said we had an electrical problem?
We had an electrical problem at Monticello that we'll just, we'll fix, pardon me?
Don't you have pump stations?
Yeah, the pump stations under there, the pumps, we had a failure of the pumps at Monticello because of some electrical circuit problems, so we got that fixed. We have temporary pumps that we took out there, but until we could get to it, it flooded. Virginia Beach Boulevard was just overwhelmed with water for a while. Its system did work, but it took a while to pump that one down. We have added emergency power to the pump stations over the years, or the capability to hook in emergency power. We still have a few to go, but most of them worked well during the storm.
You said Virginia Beach Boulevard was overwhelmed with water. So, what can you do to mitigate that?
We just need to look at the, you know, the pumping capacity and make sure that we have, what happens when the water there gets to be to such an extent, the whole area of South Brambleton becomes one drainage basin, and it's just, you end up having to pump the whole, you know, 10-block area there in addition to the underpass when the water just gets so high.
I know it floods on the other side of water in Virginia Beach, so you're saying the water, you need another basin somewhere?
Well, you know where the stormwater retention point is in South Brambleton?
Right.
Eventually, that comes up so high that the whole watershed becomes one, that with the underpass there, all the way, all the way through the area through South Brambleton, and the pumps aren't able to pump that much water out, it just overwhelms it for a time. So, until we have a chance to drain it off and pump some of it out, it just overwhelms it. No easy solution there, if we haven't done things to make sure that the pump station continues to work.
Another basin would help?
It would have to be significant, but it could, yes, sir. Some statistics of what we saw, Marcus likes to be best to everything, but we didn't quite make it here. The downtown, we had the flood level of 8.47 feet, you see compared to the top of the flood wall, we weren't close to that. The flood level at Sewell's Point was 7.63 feet, which is a little bit lower than we saw in Isabel and the November nor'easters of a year or so ago. Rainfall was one of the highest events in a long time, 8.39 inches. The only one that, in the last 20 years that's topped that was Ernesto in September of 2006. The wind speed compared to Isabel, you see there is comparable. For some reason, we had a lot more damage under Isabel, the winds were more twisting, whatever, a little more minor tornadoes, but we haven't seen anywhere near the damage that we did under Hurricane Isabel.
Well, Isabel cleared all the trees out.
Maybe.
They literally pruned the place for us.
I like to say that...
The nation turned it down all the way.
Recreation's grown better trees, as well as...
Take credit for it, isn't it? John, let me ask you a follow-up to Anthony's question. Has the Boulevard underpass flooded before?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is it, I mean, is this an ongoing issue now?
It's a consistent problem. When, remember, we have very, very heavy rains with a storm like this, what happens is, the whole thing does get, it has flooded before, yes.
It's not the capacity of the pumps, you're just saying the whole?
Well, I mean, it's just, the needed capacity of the pumps would be so significant that it's, you know, the pumps are more than adequate to pump the underpass, but they're not adequate to pump the whole neighborhood.
So, we need another basin?
That'd be one possible solution. We can look at that and give you some more information on that. The, you know, yeah, we can talk more about that later. The damage assessment is a team inspection, Frank has mentioned some of that, but we prepare a consolidated report, involves the different parts of the city, as indicated there, putting together the damage assessments to city facilities, you know, compile and report it for potential reimbursement. And then, the city facilities, we contract for significant repairs, are doing with our in-house forces. The budget impact has been talked about, and is still to be determined. The debris cleanup is the major challenge that faces it, faces us. We have activated the debris contractor, Phillips Jordan. One of the very good examples of regional cooperation is, all the cities in the region have gone together with a common contract, and there are five of these major national debris contractors available. Each city picks one or two of them, but under the contract, the prices and the conditions are all the same, so you don't have cities competing against one another for these services. This is something that's developed over the last 10 to 15 years. We activated Phillips Jordan, and also have our city crews out there. Our waste management crews, the priority there is continue with regular garbage collection, particularly with the power outages. We don't want to have any spoiled food out there any longer than need be because of the problems that would come with that, so we will be making our collection of the regular garbage this week. Debris cleanup will be done by our folks on overtime after they finish that. We also have people from Parks and Forest, Republic Works Streets Division, and cleaning the streets, preparing for the collection of debris that've gone through most of the streets, and are piling it up and bringing stuff to the curb at various places. We are giving priority to cleaning around schools and around universities with the start of school in the coming week, so we'll make sure we get through all those areas this week. We also, as in the past, have created some debris citizen drop-off centers. We have three of those that we opened on Sunday, in the Zoo Parking Lot, Terrleton Park, and Ocean View Avenue near Chesapeake Boulevard, the former Ramada Insight. We're gonna open two more for this weekend, one on Berkland South Main Street, and one at the VOTEC Parking Lot. They'll be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. each day. We are using some debris reduction sites. After we collect the debris, we need to bring it in and grind it down into wood chips or whatever to be hauled off for disposal, turned into mulch, what have you. We're using the Hanson and Goff Street site, the city-owned compound there, the contractor, Phillips Jordan, will be, is gearing up there today, and we'll start bringing their forces in heavily tomorrow. Armistead Avenue, the former City Streets compound, we're gonna use that for city crews. We had talked about doing it out at 22nd Bay and Pleasant Avenue, NRHA property, that's a potential site. It doesn't appear that we're gonna need it, but it is there if we do. And we're gonna close these sites whenever, as soon as we possibly can, and restore them when we're down to the condition that they were prior to the storm. We have liaison with other agencies. One of the big challenges is working, big challenges, it's not a difficulty, but we have to work with Virginia Power. A lot of the trees that come down are tangled on electrical lines, so it's a matter of coordination to get Virginia Power to make sure that the power's turned off, then the city starts cutting away the trees, and Virginia Power can restore the power. And that usually takes a few days to get through all of those. We coordinate with Virginia Power. We have one of our staff in there, EOC, coordinating on the priority of the restoration. Virginia Power also, you know, is essential to restoring of traffic signals. HRT, we liaison with them, they had very little damage. They had the tide back in full operation by the middle of the day Sunday, and all other operations going again on Monday. We worked with, we kept liaison with VDOT, as you know, their number, their tunnels closed, they will reopen Sunday, and we also work with the other utilities on clearing things from trees. Water and sewer, the water plants were never out of power, they have emergency power out there, that's something the Utilities Department has worked on. There have been some major problems in other areas in the country where we didn't do that. If you lose the water system, you really have a disaster. That's, has not happened here. There are a number of sewage pump stations around the city, and Kristin and her folks have got emergency power portable generators and pumps to keep those going. They still do get overwhelmed with just the volume of water that's coming in there. No damage to the water supply facilities. Traffic signals, that was the highest number, 41 lost power, 24 more were in flash and none of them were damaged, so we're close to having those restored. What citizens should know, there are three things that we handed out here. One is the press release, second one is a frequently asked questions, and another one is, the other one is a flyer that we're giving to our staff to hand out to citizens that go around the city. A lot of cases, people still without power, the only contact they have to find out what's going on is one of our city staff that are coming through, coming through the area. We do expect to continue the operation at least through September 12th, asking people to place their waste at the curb, separate it. The garbage and recycling will be done on the normal schedule, and we'll be cycling through the city. It's difficult to predict the exact schedule. We're working by planning district, some being done by contractor, some being done by city forces, but we will work through and just go all the way through the city, be working on all areas of the city at the same time till we get it done.
Place at the curb, not in the gutter.
Yes, right, right. Again, this is what to tell the citizens, we have the drop-off sites. It's very important that we get good public information out there. The basic number is our waste management number, 441-5813. We're also created today a hurricane recovery team helpline. If people call out to waste management, if they can't get through, if they're not getting an answer, if they're not sure what to do, they don't think anybody's listening to them, we have a cellphone with some of our senior staff on it, starting off with Paul Fillion and Frida Burns will be answering questions, so we'll be able to send somebody out on a case-by-case basis to make sure people get the answers that they need. We also have a website and an email where people can also get to us for things like that. And in summary, to reiterate what Marcus said, all of our city staff report after this emergency, every one of them comes in. We had one, one individual, a tree fell on his house, and his wife was injured, and he still came to work, but we sent him back home. But the people work with pride, they're resourceful, responsive, and there's exceptional teamwork, and so, we look forward to getting all this cleaned up in a few weeks and getting the city back to normal.
Thank you. John, that's a, I think that's a great report, the fact that all your folks showed up is really, you have a great credit to you, the city, and the manager, and truly.
You watched that main, did you see the main broke, and all the people out there in the rain, and trying to get that thing, did you see that? It was like the guys on Grammy Street.
We had our guys, yeah, I know.
And these guys are out there in this horrible rain and wind, and this thing is blowing, and they're down there trying to crank it closed, I mean, it was really pretty pressing.
Did we have any, there were no public safety issues that were, were in Marcus?
No, sir, there were a couple of incidents, but anything in terms of widespread, no, sir.
Okay. Well, Angela already mentioned the amount of information that we got, which was really very, very helpful and comforting to the, to the community, but also to the council. And the amount of, I mean, the fact that you took advantage of the social media, various avenues there was, was a first for us, I think. It was really, you know, people, mostly, if you can calm their fears, if they just get information, you know, they don't know when things are gonna happen, they get it, so just knowing helps. But your folks did a great job, and I know you were.
Thank you.
I got enough confidence, city and city staff, crews, and I've been through, what, two or three of these on council. Whole ton of citizens, just 180 degrees from anything. I think, I think y'all did a great job. And the people, the guys that lived on the street or whatever, very, very courteous.
I just wanna commend you and James too, for making the decision to do the mandatory evacuation in low-lying areas. I believe we were the first in Hampton Roads to make that decision. Sandbridge had evacuated, but we were right in line, and, you know, I know that's always a tough call, because some people look at it as an inconvenience, but we saw from Isabel and what the potential could be, and the lives that were lost in Virginia with this storm, with trees falling down, even that, you know, I know that sometimes we worry about the, you know, the effects if we were to get a more powerful storm, that people won't take it seriously, but I think that more people responded better to it, and I think that they heeded your call with that. And I didn't hear any complaints from anybody about having to be evacuated and making that decision, so, you know, particularly in Willoughby and East Ocean View, which were hit hard last time. Thank you for making that call. And then, you started seeing some of the other localities following after us, after we did it, so.
Good call, and I just know, we went to Richmond, and we got through the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel actually very quickly, and we were shocked, it was when we started going up past Newport News that we got stuck in traffic. It took about an hour and a half more to get up to Richmond, but I can only imagine if we had a bigger evacuation, what it would have taken to get out of here. And I know the governor never called for opening up both sides, but even so, I just, I mean, we felt fortunate to get through, but I can only imagine what would happen with that. And even 460, I think, ended up getting cut off as the storm got closer, so, and that's one of the routes for our southern neighbors to get out, so, but thank you for doing that.
We did receive a lot of compliments, actually, from the governor on down for that call.
Marcus, did we ever bless anybody? Did we ever have any residents in the Brambleton Outreach Center?
Yes, we had, yes, it was limited, but we did.
Do we get to flooding in Spark Village? Any flooding in Spark Village?
Yeah, I'm sure it was flooding, but we only had one person, two, two, total count, two people.
One of the, now...
We saw no evidence of flooding in Spark Village.
Didn't get into the houses. Got halfway up to ours.
I'm trying to say, did it flood, period?
In the yards, they had flooding, but we're concerned about getting in houses. So, unlike what has happened previously, we didn't have the issue with the homes.
Right.
Should we take that one off of this? Pretty likely.
Yeah, maybe at some point in time, we can come back and talk about the water damage issues, and what Terry was hitting at, but, you know, which part of the community actually, you know, we couldn't say, you know, we, I mean, I think we know already, but, you know, talk about, a little bit about that.
Most of our neighborhood have lost the duck work now three times in eight years.
Got a flood plan?
Addison.
Is that, did they require?
What was in the evacuation center?
They required to have flood insurance over there?
Addison, the people are paying.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sure they're out in Pretty Lake there, so.
Did you hear much about Pretty Lake?
You know, I drove around there Sunday, and I was shocked.
It was all gone by Sunday.
Yeah.
I went down to the Hague on Sunday.
I was expecting carpets to already be out on the curb. There was, it was shocking, this, I mean, surprising, I guess, to say, that there wasn't as much as before, but not a lot of complaints.
It's like what happened underneath the James Street.
Yeah, it's underneath, and you don't see it.
I know a lot of basements that had, that had.
The ticket is, you can always tell when the garage is open, because they're airing out their garages. But I wanted to talk a little bit about, is there anything we can do to reduce the taking advantage of people that have suffered from this, you know, the people that come by and charge exorbitant fees for shoddy cleanup? Is there, you know, I know we've talked about it in the past.
I think the state has a law about gouging.
Because I've already heard complaints about groups coming in that do this drying out... out, and they're very unprofessional.
Restoration.
On the governor's, one of the calls, they had mentioned there's a gouging, price gouging hotline that people can call the state and that the city attorney's office, I mean, Tomos.
So it's at the state?
Chichenelli, whatever he is.
Attorney General.
Attorney General, he.
So it's at the state level?
I'll check to see if we have any jurisdiction, and if we do, then we'll make ourselves available.
Your fees are your fees.
I'll get back to you.
You need to go with them or you don't.
But they can call and complain free margin. We need to find the people that need the rescue down at Willoughby.
They do what they say. Yeah, Long Beach said, you know, she took restoration, comes in, went back.
Please don't use any names.
There's also a D-. There's also a link on the D-Port site for.
I don't know what site that is.
D-Port is the governing, the licensing department that issues the Department of Occupational Regulation, and they issue the licenses for contractors. And so if people want to check online to see if somebody has a state license, they can go to the D-Port website and see if they, if people have a state license, they can also call the Commissioner of Revenue's Office in any city and find out. This Commissioner of Revenue's Office also has the ability, if a person doesn't know, to be able to check D-Port as well as their own records to see if somebody has a license. But I think the only thing that we can do really is just inform people. You know, if somebody just drives up to your house and offers to do work, don't give them money.
Well, this is what I was getting at, is, you know, as part of the information we have on trash, pick up and things that we could also have a link to both the state and the city and whatever this D-Port is, so that people know what to be watching for. Because it's, it's fine for us to say, well, just don't pay it if it's not a good price. A lot of people don't know what's a good price. It would be helpful for them to know how to check to see if someplace had credible ratings.
I think a lot of these restoration companies are not here. They come in.
We need to thank, we forgot to thank Chief Wise, guys who had to go rescue those people down in Willoughby that thought it was okay, that Doc, that send our.
They weren't from Norfolk, they were from Portland, yeah. Someplace else, but that's.
They thought it was safe.
Yeah. They're fine. Okay. Do we get that?
Rob, since we won't have a formal meeting before September 11th, Rob Cross is here to give us an update on the 10th anniversary.
And I mean, there is a website that you can go to that's a national website, by the way. Most of the major cities in the country are doing a commemorative ceremony. I think most, all of the cities in Hampton Roads are doing some form or fashion of this,
I think, thank you. Manager, mayor, and council, Ted Baruti's with me from Fest Events. Karen sends her regards. She's in DC today for an op sale meeting, so she asked me to do the presentation with Ted. And I think the president issued a, like an outline today of, of kind of what the federal government is using as some of their guidelines or suggestions for the 9/11 events also. If you remember when Karen and I briefed you about a month ago, our, I guess our guidelines and our goal was to make this event dignified, respectful, and very inclusive of the entire community. And I'd like to say we've received great support and participation from the military, first responders, the schools, churches, and the community at large. The park will open at 8:00 AM, and as people are entering the park, we'll be distributing around 3,000 flags to represent the 3,000 individuals that lost their lives on 9/11. And then at 8:30, we will process to the place that the ceremony is taking place. Tywater, Pipes &amp; Drums will be joining us for that procession, and the city sent out an invitation to local church choirs and school choirs. We're doing a mass choir that we're hoping to have participation of approximately 150 people. We've gotten very, very good response from that. The ceremony will start at 8:30. Firefighter Gary Coggan will be leading us in the National Anthem. And then during each of the strikes, we will, there'll be some comments, remarks, and appropriate music, and then moments of silence between each of those events. We'll start the reading of the list of the 3,000 victims with the people who lost their lives on the attack of the coal, and then we'll proceed with those names through each of the moments of silence through the end of the event, which will take place at approximately 10:30, at which point the park will remain open the rest of the day for those people that would like to pay respects and spend reflective time in the park. And then at 7:20, there'll be the playing of caps, and then at 7:30, there'll be a concert with the Virginia Symphony, music director Joanne Tofletta. And I believe we're having a meeting on Thursday with the military, Coast Guard, and first responders to solidify their support and participation on the event. So I promised Marcus to keep the presentation very brief today in light of how much was on the agenda today, but I hope that gives you a good overview of what our plan is. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Ted, if I've missed something, it's important.
Do you want to show the diagram?
Yes.
Thanks, you just had it up there.
You know, partly off of the. Yeah, absolutely. No, if you're, you can see the river probably is the easiest marker there in waterside pride at the top of the map. That procession of honor will be the parade that comes through. We're going to keep everything ground level and very simple. It's meant to be very respectful, very honorable. There will be a lot of physical large assets on site with the Norfolk Police Department and Fire and some of the maritime ships there along the river. But as far as staging, large canopies, tents, and things like that, everything will be very, very humble and in-ground level. The ceremony itself will take place in what we call Mercury Landing there at the center of the park. As we saw both in 2000 and even at the one-year anniversary, what occurred in the year after, we, we have a lot of activity in the park just throughout the day, people langreaths and what have you, and some of the same.
In case of rain, Ted was with us.
We have Half Moon Nauticus as the rain site for the ceremony in the morning. I believe the symphony chooses Chrysler Hall as the rain site for the concert.
The speaking is going to be kept to a minimum, I think, across the country. There, I mean, it's not a political event, it's not a, it's, I think even in New York there, prohibiting speeches. We've had a couple people volunteer to speak, political types, you know, elected officials, and we just, we're just really good. Admiral Harvey is, I think, is accepting the invitation to say a few words on behalf of the military. But beyond that, it's going to be, you know, just sort of a solemn event as, as fitting of a moment like this. But there'll be some, you know, the choirs are from all over the city, the people that were, they were here, and I think it'll be a very moving event, actually. I think it'll be, I know the way that Karen and Ted staged this stuff, the backdrop will be very inspiring, and to have the ships there along the water, together with our own, you know, fire department and police department vehicles will be, I don't know how many cities in the country can actually do it like we can do it here. And to have all the flags, did you mention that? You've got those people proceeding with the flags, and so, and then that evening, the symphony was, got a good program set up with Joanne Tofletta.
Yeah, the War Memorial suffered a little damage from the hurricane, but it should be up here.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Mayor, then council, there's one more, this ordinance we'd like to bring next week, and that's similar to the last time, we had a significant weather event related to waiving the spray. Would you take?
Yes, sir. After Hurricane Isabel, the city council waived building permit fees for repairs associated with the storm, and we'd like to do the same thing with your consent after Hurricane Irene. If you're in agreement, then we work with Mr. Pishko's office to bring an ordinance for it on September 14th, authorizing fees to be waived for a period of 30 to 60 days. We think it needs to be at least 30 days. We're not convinced it needs to be longer than 30 days, but if you'd like it to go longer than 30, we would not recommend any longer than 60 days. We estimate that the fees that would be lost as a result of this would not exceed $20,000 based on past experience, but we think that would be a good gesture for those homeowners who have experienced loss. And if you're in agreement, as part of the publicity for this, we'd work with Mr. Batch to make sure that people who are electing to take advantage of this are advised to work with licensed contractors and to do exactly as Councilman Williams is suggesting, a check DPLR if you have any questions as to whether a contractor is licensed.
Okay. All right, well, that's, that's it.
We need us to say, we're not, or, or as the house is already to recommend contractors. Then we get in trouble every time we do that. Have to be careful about that.
Well, Virginia is a fire beware state.
I don't care what it is.
And we just have to make sure that people understand that.
We send somebody over there and it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Attach the city office, we, publicity goes.
Marcus, I also thought you made the right call about not calling for a curfew. Just have so many people in the city working in the defense establishments and ports and stuff like that, there's just no way to shut it in the city like Paris does. That would have been more trouble just stopping. Okay, then we're going to, we're going to go in a closed session and do a few appointments here and try to just talk about.